Okay, I'm working on getting you live again. I'm working on getting you live again. I'm, I'm, give me a minute, give me a minute. Okay, there's some news YouTube Live link up Linda.
[audio cut off]
Are you still with me? We're back live. So go back into YouTube. Go to the main page of YouTube. Okay, you need to open up Zoom, get back into zoom.us and get back in there. Sorry, didn't have my phone muted so the whole world heard that. Yes. Yes. You should have it in your email.
We're good. I'm just getting our public comment caller back into Zoom.
Up here, I'm here. Yes, yes, if you're, if you're back in Zoom. Okay, I'll see you.
Thank you. I'm sorry. We're having technical difficulties. She has successfully got us back online and so just give it up again for a second. I'm the utility supervisor for the water department, Westwood Collection. It's me and eight other guys in the department that pretty much keep the infrastructure of the city's water system at Westwood Collection. I say I call it the float. All the guys working, Sean. We got it getting done. No water or something. But I, just me personally, I know that these guys are kind of behind the eight ball financially wise on money. I, I gained all my training through GRU. So I'm very thankful for it because of where I'm at today. Within my first year here, made the most of the answer to the utility supervisor based on my training and my knowledge of my duties. Right at 22, I started there around 19, right out of high school. I'm just a little proof of the training and what the conversation they gave us, you know, they kept us there. When I first started there. The water department was like a step and stuff, utility people get in there, buy a little bit of training, they will move on. This would be my second pay study thing that I've actually worked through. The city itself over there, the entire dinner pay study, found out just exactly how much we were behind. I can't remember percentage, but we had more down overall than we got. Sustainable amount of seven grades. And that's when they started keeping the guys in the department. They got in there and they stayed because they, they loved it and too. I'm glad y'all are seeing what's going on now. I just won't, I don't like to see the city being used as a headstone. It's like the fire department said, we train these guys. Get them to know how, you know, we deal with fines basically this and that, training on that, training safety. Our lives are just as much jeopardy because they are no attention to you by none of that. There's a lot that goes into that and these municipalities around here, they also, these guys were researched and see what these guys were making. And they said, man, I can go here, already got this and no way of going in a higher rate. And I just really don't, I really hate seeing that. I'm, I feel like when I'm here with them or my home, my family. I'm considering I'm part of my family. I lost my work, I thought I had it all.
You lost one of your guys recently?
Yes, it did. He had, I had three years here and he found another job that gave him about five dollars more an hour pay rate. Lost that now, we're down the guy right now. Honestly, the way the city is actually growing, I see a hard growth here, especially with the empty trucks and all that. We constantly give two to three, four times. That's just me from outside looking in on that.
What, so you lose that? How does that affect you as far as having to do overtime things then?
Well, we on call. We got a guy on call 24/7, 365 days a year. If it's a definite platform, down the guy, sometimes he's got to double up. Or even I, even I go on call. My telephone group, that's free, it's nonstop. I like hearing that. Like we got this situation, what do we need to do so far and so on. I think it's just if we could get more people and get them more trained into that and keep them here. It would be bodies that are on these, sure. Just think, once they realize they can go elsewhere with the training they got, they can see what they can, you know, they might want to. See if the grass is wet on the other side of the town. All of us has got DEP mandated distributionalizing, we're mandated to DEP, required to have that as training. Dory up at some job trainer. But um, we've got to do continuing education on that every two years through DEP. We've got to make sure we teach units on that, keep our lives up rather. And there's different levels of that. From my experience, if you live on the bottom of the lottery, the pay goes with your, your education.
So one of the things that, personally is. He's worked for three different municipalities and, and working for three different cities, he comes with a welcome hat. And also he's seen very degrees of less place working with Hawthorne. It's a smaller city, it's the city of Palacca and it's been a significant amount of time engaged with it. And so I invite all of us on this commission to give it an opportunity. He's a great person to talk to because he, he brings that, that very experience to the table. And oftentimes I think those outside experiences help us, you know, no different than council coming in from Miami. Or, you know, or even this wall coming in from Cal, all those things are actually beneficial tools as we start to, to look at what we're doing as a whole. So we appreciate you.
Just one other question on that. Through the DEP when we get our lives with our names on that. I get offer after offer through DEP from other municipalities with my names on that. Yes. And we have this position available. Better from surrounding counties, some homes from down south, the world county. Not just be surprised by what the pay is. If I notice a bigger county, bigger service area, probably more tax base in those counties. I think there's definitely room and improvement for them guys financially wise for, for the services that they do. Tell you these guys bust their butt all the time. You've seen us hand in hand, I'm sure on every time, I'm sure other people have. We do try to be workload, we try to, I do my best for us to stay. Yeah. While most people, hot times, they before, usually out there working.
Definitely appreciate it. And I don't, you ever get a chance to just see the guys at work? I mean, they're massive, but they come soon. They, they do more repair work. That would take some crews half the day to do, they'll knock it out faster than most people. Just because they're, they got expert teams. And so we definitely appreciate it. This mission, we definitely appreciate it. Sorry, for example, I got for a little time. Any, anyone else who probably works for this firm? Come on, I'm sorry. Just give a name to your department.
My name is Carl Starling. I work for the sanitation, but I kind of almost work for all of these departments besides the police department. In all reality, I think I've seen one of you fellows, ladies or gentlemen, at least one time a month, a week. Because there's only three mechanics for the city of Palacca. All these people have a car to drive every day. There's only two mechanics that work on all of the sanitation trucks. Okay, there's only two mechanics that work on all the streets departments, vehicles, lawnmowers, chainsaws. We've been having to put things out, okay? Not only that, I don't have myself the education to fix all of our newer vehicles. So what we have to do is we have to bring someone else from another county, even if state, okay, to fix this. It took the city of Palacca six months to find me. I got called. I didn't ask for this job. Then when I got here, I was offered in my mind more money than what I'm receiving, okay? Not only that, we have garbage truck after garbage truck, after lawnmower, after lawnmower, after fire truck. Our biggest fire truck just went down. I don't have the education to do that. Can I get it? Yes. Do I have the time to figure it out in order to place my job, my knowledge and my home? No, I cannot. Because the more I'm at home, the more I'm working on somebody's car, okay? I barely know. For money. I, I don't have money. Nobody here has the money they need. I'm sorry to say that. Everyone here. They're all great people. I love Palacca. I was born here. My dad's worked for the city of Palacca for 23 years. He's 55 now. He don't know whether to stay in the five-year program or not. He's worried. He don't know whether he can make it that much longer because he's a mechanic as well. Okay, I'm very understanding. We had three mechanics in my shop, okay? We had someone named Gordon that worked on all of our lawnmowers and did all of our weed eaters. And messed with everything that there is to do with our lawn maintenance around Palacca. And now, guess who's putting the bill? Me. And do I have a supervisor? His name's Ed Chandler. But does he know about cars? Does he know about trucks? Does he know about lawnmowers or does he know? No, he doesn't. All he knows how to do is get in there and drive them and orchestrate these guys, these trucks. And he's going from day to day basis on, oh my goodness, what if this truck breaks down? If we don't keep the next bull that, if we, we're going to buy another bull, okay, that's the one that does all of our commercial routes. If we don't keep the one and we just throw it away like it's nothing, we're going to be in the position we are right now. Spending a lot of money to rent a machine that we really need because these two bulls that we have are garbage. Okay, they are garbage trucks, are set, but they have been ran and ran and ran and ran. Okay, some of them run two eight-hour shifts, okay, before we got a rental truck. It takes us 30 days to get a rental truck. While my boss, Ed Chandler, is scratching his head worried, staying up at night. Why? I am one of the two mechanics that can even touch those trucks, as far as even the fire trucks. So therefore, I need more manpower. I need more time to educate myself, to be on top, to be on the board. I'm out here replacing tires, replacing pumps, replacing PTOs, okay? Replacing, replacing brake drums. I mean, it's just a non-stop thing. We have a sweeper down right now, our street sweeper that sweeps our whole city is down. I can't mess with that right now because I have a garbage truck in it's way. And not only that, just as if, okay, last week or the week before, two of those mechanics out of three took a vacation. Okay, on the same week, guess who that leaves all that with? Guess how many trucks broke down? We only had two trucks in service. Both of the bulls were down, the street sweeper went down. I've got lawnmowers coming in and going out. I'm, I'm at my wits. And what are we doing now? They're still in the shop because I don't have time to fix them all. One priority after another. I have to find my first priority and execute a plan. There's nobody else. There's no supervisor above me that knows about cars. There's thing one and thing two. There's me, who's Carl Starling and Ray Hurney at it. That's him. And in all reality, he has a natural gas certification and a brake certification.
You got, you got one to the water department?
Yes. My dad works on the water and sewers, tractors. So that is what it is. Someone's up, when, when he does vacate, he gets out of here, I'm going to need somebody. Like I said, we had five employees that worked on things around here as opposed to, to three. And it's two mostly. So we, I think that we as a city, I, like I said, my dad's worked here for 23 years. I went down to public works all my life. Used to ride a bicycle from there to school, okay? I came here, we lived in Pomona Park, but I chose to be here. I love the life. I love all these employees because they make this place so great. And you guys and ladies, this is a great place to be. We just need to make it right. Need to make it where people want to be here. I don't want to be here, but I love it here. I have family here. I've had so many job offers from different garbage truck companies. Do I want to work on garbage trucks every day? No. Do I want to work on our garbage trucks every day? No, but I choose to because I love these people. They rely on me and they come to me every day on, hey, this is wrong. What can we do about this? Well, hold on, I gotta go do this first. Firemen over here, they, they don't have, they need a new truck. They do. Because I can't fix the ones that we have because I'm doing this. We always need an extra truck for garbage and for fire. We, we just do. We need an extra sweeper in case something breaks down. We don't have enough machines and not enough mechanics to work on it. As a matter of fact, the streets department just put in for new eaters. You want to know why? Because I can't fix them. I don't have time. Them are the lowest on the totem pole. So therefore, we got fellows out there that's, here, you can use my weed eater. Here, you can use my edge trimmer. Here, use this mower. We got one crew going out on the streets instead of two because there's just not enough mowers that can be fixed.
You have that stuff on rotation.
Yes, but it's very hard.
We had a lease at some point, right? Looking to lease the equipment so that we can get a maintenance.
Yeah, natural trevor, we're in your small equipment. We budget annually to replace a certain number of weed eaters, edgers, edge trimmers and lawnmowers. Typically, we part out if it gets to a certain state to keep it in house. We do have the capability of parting out maintenance on those things to places like Fletchers and RJ.
So that's something that we can look at. I think you bring some good points, looking at what we can do. As we look into this budget year, as it relates to how we become more efficient. And, and I think with the options to bring that back. So the one thing that happens here is sort of commission. It's not charged into the operation. That's the city manager. So a lot of things that you're saying to us, they're the operational things, but as you're saying, we can address some of those things. And that's when the information becomes valuable to us. So the, I'm pretty sure the city manager's taking notes on this stuff as well. Because it's, it's information that can be a lot of ways. And I think it may be the commission as well. And so as we start to look at where we are. Maintenance for equipment and so that makes it not too difficult.
Me and, me and Sean Ladd just came up with a database that we didn't have before to, not annually, but monthly do inspections. Those are these vehicles, those are these machines, and put a number on every single one, even if they're a lawnmower. Doesn't matter, it's easy to log. So if I bought a part for this vehicle, I can go back into this database and say, hey, there's the part number. There's, I can, I, that was me. I just replaced that. Or, you know, oh, I haven't done this yet. Just come up with that in the year that I've been.
I think that's really, really good operation and like you're saying, in terms of just tracking breakdowns, repeat breakdowns and different things of that nature. Because if we constantly have you work on the same equipment multiple times. That's really good to know something may not be right, whatever, as it relates to equipment coming back in so frequently. Different things of that nature. And I think workforce utilization would probably be a good thing. I think that analysis, I don't think that analysis will address the workforce utilization in terms of looking at every department. And the workload with each individual and what they're doing as it relates to their job to see where you can utilize those individuals maybe in other areas. But like you said, you don't want to have two or three people in your department. To optimize in terms of what you can do or which you can try and achieve. I don't know if that would be cool.
ASC certified. I started out here.
You know one of your show?
Yes, sir. There's Ray here now. I work with Ray. Like I said, thing one and thing two, we don't have the authority. Y'all have not gained him that title yet. So therefore, we don't have a title in our shop.
Was it taken?
It takes time. I'm listening. What's the time? Honestly, between Linda leaving and Ashlyn taking over for Linda, or whatever it has done, them with words. I haven't had a schedule. Everybody's been so busy that we cannot make a schedule for me to go take these tests. Although, you see all these fellows are still having the trouble.
I think this is the conversation I see that Sean is coming up with. I know you have some take a piece of this. I think you are good to all of bringing this for us. But you have a city man in the jury and you have, you have an open door policy out there. That is, these things get to the point where you're frustrated and really overwhelmed with this now and bringing these issues to them. You know, and not just waiting for me to find it's a good that we're hearing these things. But as the mayor pointed out, you know, we're not in charge of the daily operation. I think that is more than fair and for you all as well. So they ought to make me bring these issues with me. So they can try to help out.
I knew if I didn't come here today, I was very scared about coming up here because of course we met a few of you, but I don't know you. I know all these guys, but still, it scares me to come up here. And I know if I didn't come here and state my case, nobody would care about me. Not seriously?
Me, for anything.
And I think the biggest thing for us is there is no backlash. Because at the end of the day, the comments allow us to become more efficient in saving money, we can save money. And it allows us to redo a lot of things we need to do to make ourselves better. And so all it comes down to is that for us, and to do information, and we agree.
And I think everybody here is doing the best they can. I don't, I have no regrets.
We definitely do that. Appreciate you. Just as a clarification, we do give them time whenever they do have some downtime. They got the computer hours. Or what they need for those they need for the training. They got the computers they can do the training when they got downtime from working on it. Currently, within the last month, we have a couple of shows, the bulls here are going to be called a fire. So that's when we're going to go around for a, I don't know, replacement. So right now, they're downtime. Whenever they got downtime, they're concentrating all their time on that machine, plus the sweeper, plus the lawnmowers, weed eater. Any of the small equipment that we can send out to RJ or Fletchers or something like that, we're doing this with. So it's taken that small though, but terrible. It's, it's not a secret. It's terrible. But we are doing everything we can to be trained for it. Let's, let's have a, let's use that conversation, city manager. So suggested this is the perfect time to, as we start to, trying to assess. And so we're going to go to the budget time. It's time to have that real conversation. At the end of the day, we know, I think Roma's building a date in this place like any other community that has had its problems for a long time. And we're trying to fix the questions and handle it. So, you know, we're, we're not overplaying the money, but we, we understand right from wrong, I think all of us. We sit up here on this side and we understand what it's like to be in a position when you're out of the theater very often. That's, that's kind of how we, obviously, at the end of the day, we're not lost on the fact that, you know, it takes money to do it. So that's, I think that's the good piece of what's in place here. And then we, we're not just, and, you know, we don't have to make any regrets. That's what we do. You can't promise you work, we can promise you work. Try. So that's what we do. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Don't think that. I know Sean Led and Jonathan Griffin has been, they have gave me the opportunity to work here. And they have gave me the opportunity to get certifications. But they have really tried very hard to get my foot in the door and be a prospering man. So they tried their best.
We have to be, there have to be some solutions. At the end of the day, the common theme I've heard so far, people overwork. And they're overworked, and people are tired. And we've got to figure out a way, at the end of the day, to make sure that there is something to leave. There'll be times where you gotta work extra, there'll be some times where you need to have a break. Everybody needs to have a break at some point, and schedules where they can have a life outside of work.
Thank you all very much.
My name's Jared Kerwin, I worked for the City of Black in under 12 years. I used to go over to Warren Sewer and I handed over to James three years ago. And Donald didn't put me in, and less than charged the infrastructure as far as contractors and sound. I'm out there every day. I help pull, or James and him out when they get, we call them bull. We help pull this. I just want to praise y'all for working challenging as far as trying to do this, you know, ready study. Everybody needs to work for the City of Black. Not just us, sanitation, fire department, city police, everybody works for the city. I think it's due, like in all instances, cities are making, I mean, the tax base and everything else, bigger cities are way above us.
And we definitely appreciate it. I think the reality of this, this city's not going to stop the people in this area. And it's not lost on us, you don't have to be here, you're prepared to care. And I think, you know, there's, if I show a hand, it's a number of people who are in the Black. They want to be in the Black, almost all these things are going to be up. And that's something that we know. And, you know, I think more than anything is important for us to listen. And not just listen, but to actually be willing to take some steps necessary to move forward. You know, we heard these conversations a few years ago, as a related to, we may get to try to write a whole bunch of story wrong. You know, we had guys who, after 10 years, we didn't raise enough. And, you know, we tried to provide a lot of the story wrong. We knew their raises had been around eight years. But even in doing so, you know, we raised the bottom. But the folks who were on top, or any of them, forgotten about. The guys who've been here, they committed. We were unable to unsuccessfully do some of those things in the same way. And I think the rate, I think the way we study is going to help us gain additional information necessary to move forward. And so that's where we are. We can talk all day about how poor the black are, but at the end of the day, the black streets and people here and the folks who work for the city. And we can take care of those, we can help us.
When I work in the sheriff's office, we're willing, knows all about the training and what it costs.
That's a long term.
Yeah. Don't make me feel that old. I thank Jonathan for offering me the job. I did not take the paper as one, took the job. My brother too. All the time. So we definitely appreciate you. And so thank you.
Any, anyone else? You have one of them last time. By short hands, we do appreciate you, boys. But by short hands, I'll stand up, if you actually live in the City of Black. Let me do it that way. By short hands, if you do not live in the City of Black. Mr. Neely, how many years? What's the countdown? Two and a half months or two and a half weeks? It's going to pop out. So anybody else at this time? One of the names I, Miss Kitchen, I know I got your comments, anyone say, what else?
I want to start by saying, Mayor, City Commissioners, Manager, I mean, thank you for having us here today. Just by holding this meeting and letting us come in here voice- heard and sorry, says a lot. It says that you attended this conference, really looking forward to all that. I didn't come up here to speak today. I read my notepad from my car, spent about two minutes making notes in the lobby when the IT went down. So I apologize in advance if I'm a little unorganized. But I felt a burden to come up here and speak as a supervisor at the police department. There are several younger guys that had things they wanted to say, whether it was just confidence or unglness to come forward. They showed attitude, and they spoke with me about it, and I decided to come up here and represent them. I'm a police officer, is what I'm telling you. I've been a law enforcement for 13 years. It's what I know, I know law enforcement, that's all I know. I don't really know our department, city boards, I don't know anything about waste management. But just in the short time that we've been in here, I learned one common thing that we all have in common. And that is, we're the best trained. The training that we have here is far beyond that that other agencies give people, the amount of time that we have here. The guys at city boards are the best city works employees that exist, who I understand. The fire department's the same way, city boards, everyone, as you said, the city boards can come out and they can do a half-day job and half the time. And that says a lot about the people that work for this city. And I understand, everyone here understands, we're not St. John's County. We're not Fiveler County, we're not, we don't have the money that all these other counties have. God didn't give us a beach. But at the end of the day, he gave us something that's different. We are the City of Black. There's a spirit in the City of Black that makes people want to stay here, even though they can go elsewhere and make more money. And that's what's keeping the city afloat. The sheer fact is, not all of the sort of Black residents, but I, people on the venture, large majority of us are from, but we count Black as the county seat, when we come here to work for the city. Now, I don't want to beat a dead horse on numbers. I know you guys have looked over numbers, they've been sent to you month after month, you've seen them. But just some quick numbers I know is, the City of Black spends about $100,000 a year training new officers. Because we lose on average eight officers a year to other agencies. In the world of law enforcement, your average officer becomes a veteran after five years of experience. Five years in law enforcement. At the City of Black, our veterans are two years. Just kind of to put it in perspective, can you, police officers, raise your hands for, for the guy? How many of you have been here less than five years? That's the majority of the police department. I believe our average is like two and a half years. I've been a sergeant for a little over a year now, and actually do for our promotional process, how to do a presentation, something I can do to make the city better, or something that could help the city better. I choose to look at our turnover rate, our attrition rate, and our tenure. And that's the number I came up with. Our average veteran officer has a little over two years of experience. And that's the guys that you have responding to murders, someone who's been here for two years. Our officers, day to day, I will take anyone who's over a five-year veteran in St. John's County, because our guys see more and do more here than anywhere else. And we have the best training. Since I've been here, I've been at the police department for years now. In that time, I personally trained. I've just been hired, got on, trained myself, and I personally trained an officer who's left the agency and currently makes more money than I do now as a supervisor. We don't say her for money, we say her because we love the city, it's great.
You're not either, both the other agencies that you work for.
So in 13 years, I've spent about 10 years of putting down sheriff's office. And now I've been a local, born and raised in aggressive city. I was born at the old Black Hospital. I lived here my whole life, I wanted to live where I were. Now, with that being said, if the number of people that we have here with less than two years, or less than five years' experience, were to have left, the city would have just lost about $45,000 or $50,000. And the fact is, we are the very best trained in the state of Florida. There's a reason that when our officers apply to other agencies, they get hired. We have very few people that apply and don't get hired. Every one of these officers, everyone who's firefighter, city works employees, waste management, maintenance guys. There are other cities that want to hire more employees. They want us right now, at least choose to stay here, because this is such a, this is special town. It's weird, we have your own, but there's a spirit about the City of Black that makes people want to stay here. So I just want to end on that, because I don't want to beat you up on the numbers, like I said. I appreciate you giving us the time to come up here. And I appreciate you guys' time whatsoever. Study, and we're hoping to see some kind of writing at the end of the wall. But we got to get some kind of light in the tunnel now. I can tell my guys with two years' experience that, hey, in three or four years, we might be getting a good raise, guys. But they can go somewhere else today and get a new raise. I don't, I don't ask for a lot, but just anything we can do to stem the bleeding for now. This year, next year, something in your future is on that. Thank you for your time.
I just wanted to go against these former commissioners.
I took one out.
I live in Kitchen, San 27th House, North Street, Black Forest. I, as a citizen, as a former commissioner, I certainly understand how hard all of our city employees work. When I was a commissioner, I, it was unfortunate that I was able to have two of our policemen were injured on duty. One was shot, one was stabbed, thankfully, they both recovered. I have seen our city workers out at night, 1:30 in the morning, working on our street. In my neighborhood, it was in Castle's neighborhood, between 1:30 and 6:00 a.m., working all night long. I've seen the city workers out in freezing weather, down in holes over their head, trying to fix a broken water line. I know how hard our firework, our firefighters work. And I just want to get it there and advocate for them, having the best raise possible that the city can give them. I understand desires of the city, I understand needs. Desires are what you would like to have, like new buildings and fancy edifices that you can brag about. Needs are what you need in salary to keep your city employees. As a citizen of Black and a taxpayer, I am willing to have a small increase in my annual taxes if it will help give raises to our city employees. Thank you.
Anyone else? Come on up, sir. I see you, Kitchen, you want to come up? Ready? Anybody else want to come up? It's just so you just twitch, you want to get it up? You're always happy. So, anybody else? If I have a question. So, Ward, you got anything in the bag? So, and just to give you an idea, step forward for just a second. We talk about training and experience, and then we got, we got a Ricky who just happens to have been awarded a prison. A unique qualification that comes out. Someone who works here in the city, who is run his own facility, who has a wealth of knowledge and budget, and does wealth and knowledge relations. These are the type of people who are coming to the City of Black. Chief, great hire, I think. But he also, some, you know, some Saturdays went up, so he, about Sam Cook was in there for a minute. But I can tell you, you know, where we are is, what we've heard, and that's where it's at, we think people overwork, underpaid, people overqualified. We've got the best training, we've got the best folks sitting in this room, and we've got to do better. It's just the reality of it. You know, my goal has always been to make sure that the folks who work for us have the ability to home home to the city where they work, without having to worry about how they're going to pay them. And for them to be able to do their work at the place, in the place that they've committed to. And so, and that's where we are. So those are my thoughts. At this time, I'll take thoughts from the commissioner and the continents that you may have, I believe, here with you, for this far. I sat quietly on purpose, because at some point, you really have to sit down and listen. And so that we can take in what we need to hear, so we all know how to advocate and push to make the decisions that we need to make. So don't take my quietness as me not having anything to say, because I have a lot to say. And I think just hearing this conversation further pushes me to push, as the manager and the team, to do what we can in order to make sure that we make the change that we need to make. I often times say, we call on you when we need you, and now that you're calling on us, because you need us. So definitely, I'm going to do everything that I can from behind this dice to make sure that we do something, and we do it as quickly as we can. But make sure that we do it, we're doing it as effectively as we can. So that this is not something that will come and bite us in the long term, but it's something that will sustain us. So that's all I have to say, man.
Definitely, this is very appreciative to hear from all departments. There's really, there are variants and what we're doing. To keep in mind, that we just came to go ahead on tonight to conduct that faculty study. So it's good that we're moving forward. I know that we're going to get things done, and I have faith in staff and our city manager that we go do things and do this for everyone. So again, thank you for coming in and sharing your concerns with us. But also, again, I want to remind you all that it's very important that you take advantage of the open door policy that the city manager has, and share your concerns with them, and not waiting to be having, they need to know these things, so that they can do what they can before, before you guys retreat. That love is a pressure. So again, thanks, and definitely, you're on board to do whatever we can to make sure that you all are able to improve your life as well as your families.
Really much here, same with Senator, as restorations and where, as it relates to quality of life for our employees. Without you guys, the city would not be able to function properly. So certainly, y'all fail without you. So been since 2015, again, you've been, I think we've been doing the right thing as it relates to the funding. First came in, we did a salary survey and pushed for monies for our staff. You know, have a CD from our first request to the city manager at that time, to be able to look at wages for our staff. And again, we have to have funding available to provide that for you. What we want to do, we want to do anything, everything we can to make sure that we keep you guys the quality of life that you need in order to be able to work one job to be able to provide for your families in here. work one job, uh, to be able to provide for your families in here, um, if you guys are having to work multiple jobs or you, you, you don't spend much time with your family, workite balances are important. So, uh, again, I don't want to be the damn one, but I think we all care on this diet and, uh, we're going to do everything we can to support, uh, our life for you guys. That's all I have to say.
Excuse me. And of course, uh, I was that guy that said we need to give our employees some money. And, uh, that's still my sentiment. Uh, and I've worked with Chief Shaw, started with Chief Shaw, that we do. I worked at the PD, uh, probably get paid like you were broke. So I understand, and, uh, that's why the challenge is out there. Get you guys some, like, public service is very important. And, uh, you know, this ain't any of it. Uh, Mr. Libra, I guess you're still, everybody else in the public, your sentiments, well, everybody probably won't take it. We're going to have to make some tough decisions on how we're going to be able to do this. It's not going to be easy. Uh, we have many things that we have to overcome and make sure that we do the things the right way. But as the board said, you all, I think there's one thing that we all want to do towards getting you guys some money. Because you know, you deserve it. You do deserve it. We appreciate what you, that's from public work, sanitation, law enforcement, as well as our fire.
Brian McKinnon, can you hear me?
So, he had some issues. And I wanted to make sure that I gave an opportunity for him to speak. So, Brian on board? Can you hear me, Brian?
Um, Brian just said that due to the storm, he decided to go attend the lift station.
Is there an opportunity?
Nothing, uh, us, uh, any maintenance, you know, that, um, obviously, we understand that we have an issue with our, in the last year to address issues. And we'll think back, um, to May of last year, and since that time until now, we had changes in almost every, uh, of the administrative positions at City Hall. Finance Director, Planning Director, City Attorney, actually was a little bit before May, uh, and, and right on down the line. We put people back in place, A.J.R., to make some progress. This time last year, a few months ago, uh, you know, a number of people had a lot of problems with paychecks, with income tax deductions, with insurance premium payments, with a, a number of those issues, with claims being processed, with bills being paid, and a right. Those have pretty much been resolved through our, our efforts. We understand that there's a need to deal with the wage issue, but it wasn't something that we could deal with on a pieced-up basis. We all know that we, we make adjustments and wages of any department, we trigger response in our department, of union, I grab. Uh, you can't just take one department and throw money at that department. And that was the reason that we went out for the RFP, the Request Proposals on the wage study. And that wage study, as indicated, is not just calling around and saying, what is your firing? It's a lot bigger than that. That wage study will involve suggestions as to budget, it'll involve suggestions as to step in pay increases within classifications. It'll involve also matches of our job classifications to make sure that we're comparing an admin one to an admin one, we're comparing people who have the same duties. And that's why it's a big, a bit more significant than just a survey, a, a phone call survey. It will involve an opportunity for everyone, every employee, in one form or another, to drive input to the people doing the study. And then that study will give this community some, some basis for finding maybe a, a change that is lasting every day. Uh, a change that is something that hopefully will take us into the future and is not just a band-aid on an issue that lasts for a couple of months or for a year or whatever this might be. So, um, they've taken the first step tonight to commission that study. And as I stand, um, while that study could take some time, we have emphasized in the RFP and the staff has agreed that the first task to be accomplished will be the wage and compensation comparison, which will accomplish in the first thirty days. Uh, that is going to require that quick response from all of you, uh, that we're going to have turnaround times of about a week when they start picking their solicitations for information regarding what you do in your job. There's going to be written questions there that you said you're going to have to fill out, that they can then use to, to move forward with, uh, with trying to focus on what areas they need additional information in. So, the commission has made its, its intent, has, uh, has priority clear, and, uh, I certainly have no desire to interfere with that or to do anything but implement their, their, uh, their desire. It's going to take months, and that's where, that's where the harder part is going to come in, but I can assure you that, that staff is going to work diligently trying to accomplish what's been asked of us, to give the commission proposal, give them options, which is what our job as staff is. Want to do it quick?
And so, I, I think imposing on this particular matter, if you're ready, move forward and for our meeting. Yeah, we still have to, so the, the thing is this, um, I, I don't want to sit here and give a bunch of lip service. We are in, we're getting ready to start one-on-ones for budget. We're, we're in the process of getting ready for our budget workshop. But there's a, there's no better time for us to take up these issues than now, because it allows us as we move into the next budget year, which is only a couple of months away, to make real change. And the thing that we don't want is, walk into this next budget year, making a decision based upon a lack of expertise. We raised the program. We, we gave throughout our raises, um, in some areas, and it had an impact for a few years, but it was placing a bandage on the vestre. So, at the end of the day, we've got to do something that makes sense, something that we have a period of data to support where we are and make it, and make it work for everybody. Because we shouldn't spend a hundred thousand dollars on retraining folks. We shouldn't spend large portion of our overtime and staff, and we can create wages that will minimize turnover. We shouldn't have to worry about being a training ground, because we should be a place where people will retire. And for a lot of the young guys, differently than the guys who've been around for ten or fifteen years, that don't really care about longevity pay, they don't care about what their pension is, they care about the here and now. And at the end of the day, there needs to be some plan that makes, that puts you in a position where you can prosper. Um, and that's just the reality of it, and, and then that's just, that's what it is. Now, I can tell you, nobody on this diet is getting fat off of pay. You know, we're here because we care, no differently than you are. You're here because you care, and you work your butt off, and we appreciate it. And we're going to continually tell you thank you, but instead of just giving you lip service, we want to make sure we got a bunch of steps in place. The issue we brought back up in totality, put an RFP on the streets, and we got a response, and we wore it. That happened in a matter of thirty days. Now, in the next thirty days, we're going to have salary comparisons. We're going to keep moving forward. We've got a task force that will report back to you, let you know what the progress is. If you've got concerns, talk to your representative that's on the task force. Make sure that their voice is the base necessary for you to get that out to the city manager. City manager's going to report back to the commission as to what those meetings have brought out, and we're going to continually make the steps to move forward. And so that's where we are. We don't want you to sit here and think that, make sure you're going to get the same lip service and nothing's been done. That didn't happen. We're going to do something. You know, I can't tell you what, because we're going to rely on that study. We're going to rely on experts to tell us where we are. The one thing I don't want us to be is, is cognitive. I don't want us to be at a point where everybody perceives that, you know, the brass is making money, even if people lower are forgot about. I want us to be at a point where we realize that they're fair, that people are just all around the city, and people who give their heart and soul to this community are beyond what we're for. And you're not getting McDonald's money when you've gone out, gotten certified, and you've been trained. That's just the reality of what it is. So, I appreciate everybody here who spent time with you today. We apologize for the inconveniences that you face on a daily basis in order to make the city better, and we commit to making sure that we look at this study, that we implement a real plan as to how to commit to its findings, and that at the end of the day, your sacrifices don't go bad for years and you don't get lip service. That's what we can commit to. You know, I, I can, I don't want to sit here and tell you how poor we are, because again, we're rich in people. We're rich in people in this room, and we're going to know what we got to do to make it right. And we walked in here and equipment was short. We came in, you remember, fire truck was cutting off, started to happen again, but you remember going calls and trucks were twenty years old. We committed to doing those things. We committed to updating your equipment. We committed to updating your facilities, and those are all things that we're going to continue to do. We want to make sure that while you're in those facilities, while you got that new equipment, while you're riding those new vehicles and all that other stuff, that you have the opportunity to do that at home as well. So that's what we're looking to do, to making sure that we continue to push forward, continue to educate staff, and we continue to push you forward to ownership, create financial literacy, all those different things, but that we put some ready up into. And so, that's what we're looking to do, and that's our commitment. So again, I just want to thank you guys for, for being here, for your comments, and for your commitment. We're going to read through the rest of this agenda. Item number seven on the agenda. We're up here this time. We're just twenty-four, one, that's sixteen.
Um, may I read the caption this time? Thank you. An ordinance of the city of Palatka, Florida, amending the municipal code by amending chapter seventy-four subdivisions by adding section seventy-four, seventeen F, and seventeen, uh, sorry, seventy-four, seventeen G, lot splits, providing for conflict, providing for an effective date, providing for separability, providing for the correction of square meters.
Um, I wanted to let you know that I'm the one that got this lot split problem started, I might have called someone and hired you to do some checking on property, and the lots have been split, and when I checked into it, my app, the city had no policy addressing. However, looking at this, uh, I have found some issues that I think you all need to be aware of, and I think you need to correct before you totally pass this ordinance concerning lot seven A or lot splits. And I emailed each of you about four o'clock this afternoon. I don't know if you got email, but it's, I might have seen you go and call along. Uh, seven A lot splits, there are some requirements in this ordinance as it now stands that are unnecessary and will place an undue financial strain on individual citizens that most will not be able to afford. It won't affect developers, as they simply will simply write it right off the cost and their sales price. On section F, lot splits, paragraph subsection three, it reads, "A person wishing to divide the lots into two lots will obtain survey of the split showing land descriptions and acreage or square footage of the original and proposed parcels and a scale drawing showing the intended divisions signed and sealed by Florida Licensed Surveyor. The survey shall clearly describe the affected planted lots or parcels of land and any existing parcel or, or accessory structure. The majority of Palatka is a recorded subdivision. Recorded subdivisions have to be surveyed, planted, and recorded. The lots and blocks shown on the recorded flat are the legal descriptions of those lots, and the dimensions of each lot clearly shows up on the recorded map. Lots in a recorded subdivision don't need to have a new survey. A copy of the recorded flat should be used instead. Surveys cost thousands of dollars, which the average citizen can't afford to pay, and in a recorded subdivision, they are unnecessary, in my opinion." Uh, sub, paragraph four under section F, it says, "The person who is desired to split the lot will then submit four sealed copies of the survey with the application and required fee to the planning director. The planning director delivered the recorded plaque to determine if the lots meet section two above, as it has already been serva, it has, it's already been surveyed with lot dimensions on it." So, paragraph six, it says, "The applicant shall record new deeds from the Putnam County Recording Office. If the split-out lots are still in the same name, there is no reason to have a new deed drawn up and recorded from the property owner or owners to themselves, as they already had a recorded deed when they brought the lots, when they bought the lots, and prior to the property pressure, placing their names on the property. Getting a deed drawn up is very expensive, and having it recorded also has a cost. My suggestion is that there be another exception avenue that excludes any lots in recorded subdivisions. That's one, one suggestion I might have to others." Thank you. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them. I might add that the majority of property in the city of Palatka, like ninety-nine percent of it is recorded subdivisions. In the county, this very well applies because the majority of the county property is in what's called REITs and MOWs, which means there's no recorded subdivision, there's no recorded lots on it. So it's different in this city, and I think we need a slightly different, uh, ordinance here. Also, that, that we need to impress lot combinations, because we have more of those in the city than we do splits, and lot combinations have been an issue a couple of years ago. Thank you. Question, Dom? Can I sit down? Oh, yeah. Can I sit down?
Sure. Um, actually, the purpose for, you know, the reason behind this ordinance was because of, you had a potential builder who was looking to, uh, split one larger lot into two, and there was nothing in our ordinances that allowed it unless you went through the full subdivision process, to the extent. The county has a lot split ordinance, as do most jurisdictions, that simplifies the process and doesn't require you to go through all of the requirements of a subdivision approval. Our, ours had no, no, no such. Mr. Sam is actually drafted the ordinance, but I agree with the ordinance. I believe that it provides a minimum necessary order for us to have, uh, definition and certainty as to the new lots that are being created. The fact that it's a planted subdivision doesn't, doesn't take away from the need to define how lots are going to be, what exactly the dimensions are going to be. If you're going to have adequate square footage, adequate setback rooms, room that you're going to have, uh, need the district records of the comprehensive plan, or you want to see those by dividing one lot into two. And so, basically, the, the need for a survey is, is, in my opinion, present. You need to have a survey to establish exactly how a lot is going to be figured out when you finish. Um, the, uh, technically, if you got real technical and you wanted to make this, uh, by the foot, modify lots in a subdivision by amending the flat, but that's not cheap. So actually, I think what we've done is, we've created a shortcut that will still give us the certainty of going with what a lot is going to look like when you finish, still allowing you to measure the parameters you need to measure and, and not cost the money that, that, uh, that the current procedures that aren't, uh, required. Surveys, you know, they're not cheap. Um, they're not inordinately expensive when you're just doing a boundary survey. This is a boundary survey. Preparing a deed is not expensive. I, I mean, everything is relative, but I mean, deeds, fifty or a hundred dollars, many pieces that you get are done, and recording it, depending on how much money is being paid for, is, is not that expensive either, in the parcel. So, I agree with Mr. Sam, as I didn't draft the ordinance, I didn't review it after the change, but I, I believe it, it does possibly track the process that's used in the county, and I think it's about as minimal a process as you could have, and still has surgery that we need to make sure we keep track of, of the other things that, so, I, I stand by the ordinance.
The property in question, while Mr. Hunter was doing his one large lot, was actually lots forty-three and forty-four for his park. It was planted as two lots, it was two lots, the property owner had bonded together. So when they separated it out in the property appraisal office, they had the dimensions of the original plant, just clarifying that. Well, that's the one I'm, I'm referring to, and there are, there are some exceptions, but.
Just want to hear, can you share, um, the process work over there?
So Walsh, please. Married in Cala, in Mary County. Cala didn't need a house with lots with, it was all the responsibility in the county because it was their process of the property appraisal, and everyone had to go to the property appraisal office to announce something.
They were to mount to?
Yes, they were required to do surveys and.
So outside of just the fact that it's a property appraisal, the person that's saving the process is very simple, yes, that's why I'm requiring. And so I appreciate that. Do you have any other questions for Walsh? Thank you. So the only, so my only thing is, when surveys aren't as, they're on thousands of dollars, one of the, that's just got four a survey for, for like nine hundred bucks. But I've had single lot survey for three hundred dollars. Most of your deeds are under twenty-five to a hundred dollars on average. The type of company does it for about eight bucks. The reality of it is, if we're changing weeks of out on big lines, the cheapest way to do it is, to basically do it for a survey, um, and to go ahead and draw a line division in as long as they can, and so that you can get a certain basis, but, um, that's the simplified process of all of it. And looking at your list, but it's the only difference that you got in other communities, I think, is the fact that they do it with various offices. The reality of it is that for us, we don't want to spend a lot of time with lot splits to the extent that it devolves down to what we're doing with our planner versus how we can deal with some of this stuff on the court. And that's just the reality of what it is, the process working design. And I think more than anything, I think we're all looking for consideration as we look at this. But I think ultimately, we've got to look at a way to, which we consider by process, just as the lot costs and choose things in place so that we don't find ourselves in a situation where we're, you know, we're requiring surveys and topography and things of that nature to move forward. Where, and when someone sits and sees that a lot splits here, they're hoping to be right, especially with how these processes move in play. And so that we have a uniform process where if you want to look at it, you know exactly what they have to do in order to get served. Is there anyone else here who can comment at this time? We told you what you're calling it. So, any comments or comments? Next up, ordinance twenty-one seventeen.
Thank you, Mayor. An ordinance amending chapter sixty-two signs by adding a section sixty-two eighteen, providing for off-premise signs for business uses in the downtown Riverfront DR district and the downtown Business EB district, providing for conflict with other ordinances, providing for an effective date, providing for separability, and providing for scripturers. Not at this time. An ordinance amending chapter ninety-four of the city of Palaca Land Development Code, section one dash two, by adding the definition of tattoo parlor. Amending sections ninety-four, one sixty-two E by adding for, uh, sub-paragraph fourteen tattoo parlors and amending section ninety-four, one forty-nine subsection E by adding subsection twenty-one tattoo parlors as permissible with, uh, conditional uses, providing for conflict with other ordinances, providing an effective date, providing for separability, and providing for. Not at this time, Mayor. An ordinance of the city of Palaca, Florida annexing into the corporate limits of the city of Palaca, Florida, certain adjacent territory identified as property appraisers, parcel thirteen ten twenty-six oh 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 five five oh 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 north. North twelve A of east a half of the northeast quarter of southwest quarter, X, 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 Orman Lee Estates. Contiguous to the boundaries of the city of Palaca, providing for scripturers, providing for.
Is there anything YouTube chat? Hearing nothing in the YouTube chat, we're going to close public hearing at this time. Any further discussion? All good, say aye. What was Kerry saying? Moving on, people and use map and ordinance, please ask to that.
Thank you. An ordinance of the city of Palaca, Florida, providing that the future land use map of the adopted comprehensive plan be amended with respect to the following parcel of land less than ten acres in size from Putnam County Urban Reserve to the city of Palaca Residential Light for the following property, north twelve A of east half of northeast quarter of southwest quarter, X Orman Lee Estates, property appraisers, parcel thirteen ten twenty-six zeros, zero five five zero zeros, contiguous to the boundaries of the city of Palaca, and providing for scripturers and providing for an effective date. An ordinance of the city of Palaca, Florida, providing that the official zoning map of the city of Palaca, Florida be amended for Putnam County Residential R one A to the city of Palaca Residential R one A for the following property, north twelve A of east a half of the northeast quarter of southwest one quarter, X Orman Lee Estates, property appraisers, parcel ID thirteen ten twenty-six four zeros, oh five five zero four zeros, providing for separability, providing for scripturers and providing for an effective date. An ordinance of, uh, ordinance number twenty-one thirteen. An ordinance of the city of Palaca, Florida, annexing in the corporate limits of the city of Palaca, Florida, certain adjacent territory identified as twenty-six fifteen Hudson Avenue, Palaca, Florida, three two one seven seven, part of the southwest quarter of the southeast quarter of official records, three sixteen, page six hundred, uh, contiguous to the boundaries of the city of Palaca, providing for scripturers and providing for an effective date. Ordinance number twenty-one fourteen. An ordinance of the city of Palaca, Florida, providing that the future land use map of the adopted comprehensive plan be amended with respect to the following parcel of land less than ten acres in size from Putnam County Urban Reserve to the city of Palaca Residential Multifamily for the following property, twenty-six fifteen Hudson Avenue, Palaca, Florida, three two one seven seven, part of the southwest quarter of the southeast quarter of official records, three sixteen, page six hundred, contiguous to the boundaries of the city of Palaca and providing for scripturers and providing for an effective date. An ordinance of the city of Palaca, Florida, providing that the official zoning map of the city of Palaca, Florida be amended for Putnam County Agriculture, the city of Palaca Residential Single Family R one A for the following property, twenty-six fifteen Hudson Avenue, Palaca, Florida, three two one seven seven, part of the southwest quarter of the southeast quarter of official records, three sixteen, page six hundred, providing for separability, providing for scripturers, and providing for an effective date. Uh-huh, oh. That works.
Uh, sure. Uh, as you can see, uh, this is the, uh, current, uh, year of the day two, we're up, uh, up into June, June, about including here. Uh, but it's the UCR and average report, uh, there's a couple areas showing increases. We have an increase in aggravated assault, a correction in aggravated battery, and in vehicle theft. But we are still down in all areas dealing with the UCR at eighteen percent. And as you can see and noted, that the UCR, I'm sorry, the NIR's crime is at, uh, an increase of one.
To, um, the report that we're having, um, where it talks about an increase in crime overall, we're showing.
Well, the increase in crime overall was actually for twenty twenty, not twenty twenty-one. Showing the increase in UCR issuing, oh, as an effect, uh, as an result of, uh, addressing those issues that increased. Last year, in semi annual, we had twenty-two percent increase. We finished the year at ten percent. So we began, uh, addressing those issues as a year overall. One of the major issues was, uh, retail theft, capital foresight, uh, made that with Walmart and made some, uh, progress in, in that area. And this year, we're showing a sixty-one percent decrease in that area. Like retail theft is what drove our crimes of crime area to.
That's just the way that you call the service.
Well, it was more so, uh, some changes Walmart made and staffing and different things like that. That's correct. We were averaging approximately three to four calls for service a day at Walmart alone.
Another big thing that we talked about is just the violent crimes that have been. And that, uh, murders and that may, you just start looking about strategy that you have and the rest of that. Trying to curb those. Sorry. On the murder, the murder aspects and the violent crimes that occurred. We know a lot of it, we can attribute to the pandemic and some of the response that kind of. But can you just kind of give an insight, insights from the public, um, on what strategy we're going to kind of deal with some of those issues that we end up with? So, uh, significant number of murders compared to normal years, here that was such a danger.
That's a, that's correct. Murders is something a little different, and it's a little hard to address depending on how they occur. So far this year, we had nothing that's been repeated violence, they're all been identified as individual incidents, um, which has all been addressed. What we've been doing is we've been going out and identifying hot areas. We've been looking at individuals that have repeated causes of cases that deal with aggravated assault or aggravated battery violent crimes. And we've been addressing those institutions and, and individuals, either via arrest or sitting down and having patients to draw issue.
Another question.
So the, what we've been doing in partnership with the sheriff's office is, I don't, you've seen the signs posted in the neighborhood and addressing, uh, we've been very successful with, uh, actually apprehending those individuals to, uh, decrease the crime spree, so it won't affect us a lot. Uh, part of the, the prob- problem in addressing, or part of our progress is identifying and addressing those issues as they come up. And, and we identify those suspects where it takes us a little time, it may take a day or two, a week or two, something like that, so we can actually get that, that individual apprehended. By putting out the information to the public, it helps us into the.
Chief. Chief, uh, you talked about the, the, um, what, what strategy are we going to try to, uh, decrease those? Though that is probably challenging, because, yeah, it's not, it's not a, uh, training as well, a little bit like. What areas are we seeing? Like I have seen red, um, housing in sports, preparing, uh, like, God's just a good dog and African and, and, uh, murder suspect. Boucha County, it seems to be a, uh, a power area. If that, if that is issue for you, and so, what can we do to curb that? What do you think?
Well, to answer your first question, uh, for violent crimes, sometimes violent crime is harder to attack than property crime because most of those incidents are unseen, they're, they're unpredicted. So in doing so, what we look at is what we call hotspot areas, usually with a crime that's continuing to occur. that's continuing to occur in a certain area, then we saturate that area and with law enforcement, we identify the problems with them and eradicate those problems. So, with what we're seeing in your statement, we have had a couple issues involving incidents in housing authority or near the housing authority, and then we have apprehended a subject, Chaplain Forsyth spearheaded arrest, to go along with Detective Lee and Sheriff's Office, the arrest of subject out of Lucha County, he was acting on our behalf as the administration supervisor, to basically doing that Walmart deal, I stayed out of him as long as I could, but I couldn't, I had to leave, but those are just, the, I would say that's one in a few where that individual may come to the county and hide in, in housing authority, they usually come and we are locating them all over, it's not just identified as housing authority, but housing authority is working with us very well as, as far as being able to access, identify those individuals, and if we're running into problems with it, our relationship has increased to where addressing that issue and getting them out of that area so the problem doesn't continue, so that's what we've been doing, that's what we've been working with, being able to communicate with them on a daily basis and address the problem is our number one concern, that's what I've explained to.
And as it relates again, just use that as an example, like when I was asking about packing, extra patrol maybe, you think, that, you think, perfect, this is to make it safer in the environment or in the community, just wanted to be absolutely, get ease, if you can see that, it does bring some fear, you can kind of like, you know, house, what they can.
Sure, as you know, there's certain tactics that we don't like to, but yes, to answer your question in short, there's a number of different things that we do to flood the area, to identify the problem, to eradicate it.
It is not harassment, it's just, it's really different.
That's correct.
Thank you. Seemed like we were outside of this conversation, it was detectives talking one another. Any other questions from the commission?
Yeah, mine, the Southwest Alps, same thing, I check the same. Commissioner Jones, and looking at the forty two percent that we had talked about in the past as related to Walmart and the county, or to some call.
That's correct.
So, so you have some.
Sorry, I'm here, but that accounted for calls for last year in services, our call for Walmart so far, am I correct, correct me if I'm wrong, has gone down to a register?
But, so you've got a strategy in place for that, but we also, again, the J P, which I think you're putting something in place for that as well, instead of the substation again, but again, if you're going to be putting presence in there, that's what we've been in terms of the help with those various things that's going on, as we said, we have a number, unauthorized, more, you know, bikes, four others, and all the things that we've talked about in the past as well, so we kind of found a place where needs those individuals with those motorbike bikes and that nature, we can find a lot of land, whatever, they weren't able to use sites at one point, my understanding that they have, I didn't know if allowed them to do that, somebody.
Ain't really been allowed.
Well, no, it's actually a private property, they were, they were using it, being undisturbed, but I can tell you the damage to the property, the different stuff that's been left out there is, is caused resources not only for the owner, but city, I believe Mr. Griffin tested to different things that's been dumped out there repeatedly, what it basically succumbed to was the owner saying they didn't want to own the property anymore, so that caused for us to enforce the trespass authorization and no longer allow them to hold up to any rights.
You know, and I think when there was, that stopped or that, you know, there, and they came to the community, you know, mainly approximately eleven nineteen.
Well, and we, we did see, and we had, our policy of police department in reference to ATBs or anything like that on the roadways, we attempt to make contact with them and let them know there's a one strike policy, we catch you again on the road, then we're towing your ATP, but we also understand that they don't stop, and for safety reasons and things of that nature, then we don't chase, so it, it's a, a problem that we know, but we know there's only so much that we can do as far as getting them at the time outside of identifying them later on and going to their homes.
Last thing, with the, the safe answer with the impact, just like you have impact in bringing subdivisions and all other things when you have undue impact, safe answer might be forty two percent calls coming from two agencies, and knowing we're supposed to be pursuing such as all those lines that are related to, given away from Black Housing Authority in terms of, can we, is there a way that we can kind of help, you know, to help us to be able to provide additional resources as it relates to our ultimate service that area more than, because they're not available to the resident community as it relates to that.
As far as any assistance that we may give, I'm open, and I've been communicating, communicating with the city manager in reference to how we can get more assistance from the housing authority, but, and where we stand, and in my line of work, there's certain things that we just don't wait for, we can't wait for, so we, we still have to answer the call and find outside needs to be able to address and assist and provide services to that neighborhood. So, again, what we started doing, COVID has lifted, we started getting back in the neighborhood, we are reaching out for community resources, with the summer camp being over at Jenkins, it's helped out tremendously, it allows for us not only to touch base with those residents on the North Side a little bit more, but for them to see us around, as well as with the substation, the officers are doing briefings at the substation and parking and doing reports and things of that nature, it allows us to be in the neighborhoods a little bit more as invisible outside of just coming for calls for service, and I think those are helping, I think it, I'm not going to say stuff, the complete answer, but again, there's the things that we can't wait for, we must begin to go out and utilize our resources to attempt to address problems.
So, as a relation to PHA, are you used to, how does PHA relate, how does it compare to other areas as far as officer?
I believe right now, if I'm correct, it is our highest call for service, as far as entities, it's in the block. So, at least to have that up in more caution programs, trying to get with some of the two there. It would take up most of our resources.
We didn't need, the director of the housing authority, Chief and I did, we had an idea, we thought might address issues that we're having at the authority and freedom, man, I want to remain of the city, but we declined to, just.
And so we're going to continue with the partnership and do things the way it's worked, we're extending those things to address through programming with kids. Correct, that, again, that, we, we realize that we have to have partnerships, and we realize we still have to continue to address problems, the business side has to come from a different area and will pre-attack that when we came, but for us, it doesn't prevent us from being able to service the citizens to, on the North Side, even though it is a major part of our hall system, we said, we said. And not only door to the road. Any else with you? Thank you, thank you. Thank you as well, gentlemen in the back, captains? Any, anything else, Shay, you have anything? Sheila, anything?
Couple quick things.
Usually has the one to join me. Two things. F A A has announced the third round of COVID airport assistance, actually two thousand dollars.
When, so when it goes on?
Eighty nine thousand dollars. Years ago, we had thirty, actually we got forty three, eighty nine thousand, that brought the thought, and the second thing is, it's a long, long time coming, tomorrow we're going to be taking care of the rust and painting, let's take yours.
Send me pictures. That's it. It's good news.
Mr. Manalor, herself.
Miss Shay, you have anything for us?
I do not.
That's a mulberry. Okay. Chief Taylor, I'm here, have to leave for class. Anything for us, Liz Walsh? That two day report? Anything for the clerk?
Just want to wish happy birthday to Commissioner Campbell.
He's forty. He's thirty five. He was just twenty, he was just twenty eight, not two months ago. Are we invited to the party? No, so that means no. So much for that guy. But, Proton, looking for legal. Open on, Commissioner Jones. Sorry. That only works if, that only works if it comes to church. Commissioner, Commissioner Muller.
Man, Director, Ms. Walsh, and welcome aboard, and thank you for the quick work, you guys, so much. And one other thing, we had Jermaine Douglas, who stepped out, we had a TBN network, people came in with, to travel, was he was coming, they did a five, five day tour here, and they go from state to state, so they had me in Florida and out to be in Placa, so they was having a little bit of trouble trying to get marked over at, you know, hotels, you know, the American, so went around there and kind of gave them a little bit of assistance, and we, they were preserved the area for him to mark to make it a little bit more, because they were considering not getting on, staying, but anyway, Jermaine was still working late at night after seven o'clock, seven thirty, helping accommodate that, but basically what they were doing there, they, they go around to jails and provide, I guess, services for inmates to help them recover or whatever, so, state to state, so they have to be here, so we're welcoming, actually, turn broadcasting networks, and for them to be here, that was, that was the opportunity, and want to also thank police for their tireless work that they've been going through in the past, two weeks in the rest of the departments too, so everybody's doing a great job, and we're going to do the best we can, you know, with all their life, so.
Sure, the same sense, Commissioner Moore, I'm going to thank, no thanks, and also just want to thank the crew for getting that on the record, for allowing us to sit in the ceremony, going to the house tonight, and look forward to having conversations with them more, so, thank you.
Mr. Campbell, happy birthday guy. I echo the sentiments of both Commissioner Moore, as well as Commissioner. So I'm going to belabor that point, but in the words of our media past vice president, y'all better together, and I think tonight was a strong indication of how committed we are, sitting behind this highest to make sure that we continue to do what's right for the city, and we're definitely in the right direction, so again, to our family that we see that works for the city of Placa, for trusting us with this process, and I promise you that I am going to do everything, and I know that we, I speak for everyone, that we're going to do absolutely everything that we can do to make sure that we make this the right for everyone, so again, thank you all for being with us tonight, and that's it, I knew my mind.
I missed two departments, H R, you have anything for us today? Cultural, cultural, community affairs, recreation, one up. So, that's where, so, that's last time, but today, I want, I want to, and the absence of Pastor Mulberry, right now, I want to make sure that we don't forget that today, there was an awesome time, he had a clergy appreciation ceremony which filmed the Price Martin Center, great opportunity for us to create a partnership with our clergy, I think which is going to be critical to move forward and doing some of the things that Chief Shaw talked about in his report, and so that's a critical piece for us, it's something that hasn't been done for a very long time inside the city of Placa, he's done a great job as chaplain in bringing the community together, and so I'm excited about that, I don't think the speaker went too long today, Commissioner Campbell said, we got twenty years, but we were trying to be on point and gave Chief Shaw a ton of heat, but I agree with that, nonetheless, and I think a great opportunity for us to create the faith based initiatives necessary to move the community forward, allow, and allow the center of our community to start there, and so, really excited about that, I also got an opportunity to travel this week to Boca Raton, for the mayor's, and really sit down with several groups of mayors to talk about their American Rescue Plan and what the opportunities are that exist for us, got a great opportunity, E D A right now from an infrastructure standpoint, they've got one point five billion dollars, which will be critical and opportunities for infrastructure, we've got a lot of shovel ready projects, and I'm ask you, Vickers, very instrumental, it connected us with E D A, with individuals who could help us and to provide us with great information, so it's just another example of citizens using their relationships to better the city of Placa, and, and just lastly, we can't send up our employees, I think this commission shows commitment to making things right inside the city, we all sacrifice the same way, but at the end of the day, we want to make sure that families are able to grow, that our staff is able to prosper, and that our community will continue to be Jim of the St. John's group, so I'm excited about where we're going, we've got Dirk turning, we've got new faces coming in here with innovative ideas, and we've got a lot of love that's out of this room, and so that's the beauty of being in a small community and having the true snapshot vote for, that concludes my report.